Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board meeting is now called to order. Board members, we have six members present, five here in the boardroom, and Dr. Harris Kristen is on the phone. We have all, therefore, we have a quorum. We've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Board members, we do have one change to the agenda, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt an amended agenda, and that's to move item 8A, the approval of the master services agreement for backup of five from Casia to executive session. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda with that change?
I shall move.
Okay.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Ms. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. We've all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the October seventeenth regular board meeting minutes? Before we, go ahead, motion? Mission?
Yeah, motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. McGuffey has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded. Ms. Williams, I think I sent a change over. Were those changes?
Yes.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Dr. Green?
Thank you, Dr. Sevak. Good evening, board members, to our team members and community members, everyone who's with us this afternoon. We'll begin with our highlights, video highlights, from the instructional television team.
This is a celebration.
We have a celebration of our advanced performance, darling.
Hundreds of JPS scholars from elementary to high school, recognized for their performance on the 2022-23 MAAP state testing exam.
I think it's important that we take the time to celebrate students, young people doing the right thing. Congratulations again for all that you've accomplished today.
And really reflect on not just what we did as a district, but what individual scholars have done.
These scholars got only past the assessments, they excelled on the assessment.
Scholar achievement in learning English Language Arts, Math, Science, and U.S. History.
You study even when you're tired. You have persisted, and now your hard work has paid off.
Was celebrated by family, faculty, and friends.
And we know that our scholars are not just their test scores, but this is a testament to all of the really important work. Smart people doing really important work. Thank you, young people, for your work.
An award ceremony at Wells AIPAC where artistic designs were unveiled.
A coin design competition for our Activate Mississippi campaign.
Alexis Gibson, Sims Powell, and Miuna Powell received monetary prizes for their creativity.
Activate Mississippi, we've been visiting various college campuses to make the subsequent voting more attractive.
Their winning designs will appear in a comic book called Defenders of Democracy to engage Mississippi youth in the voting process.
Stephanie Peters, can you come forward, please?
A surprise award presentation at Wingfield High School.
She goes back and beyond for the students. When it comes to the college duty, she's there.
Biology teacher Stephanie Peters was honored with the Alice Clark Education Award for her dedication and service teaching JPS scholars.
She wanted everybody to succeed and be the best they can be.
My expectations that I have from my own children are the same that I have for these. We still need thousands and thousands of more like her, not just to impact Jackson Public Schools, but to impact schools across the country. She is phenomenal.
And join us for an optimization plan community forum at Murrah High School Tuesday, November fourteenth from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, on Instagram at JPS Doodle Voices, and Twitter at JPS District, Comcast Channels 18 and 19, and YouTube at youtube.com/JPSITV.
As always, I'd like to thank the team for pulling those updates together. Board members, we have a, as you've seen, we've got a pretty stacked agenda, so we won't make our remarks long here this evening. Just want to make sure we can get to some of the other information and action items. But I am excited to welcome our 23, 24 school board representatives who will, you'll hear from a little later, or you'll be introduced to them a little later. In the last two years, our scholar board representatives, as you know, have been used, have used their voices to kind of lift up some of the, excuse me, some of the issues or some of the concerns that they've seen throughout the district, and certainly ones that are tied to some of our policies, and have given us some, lots to think about, I think you'll agree, lots to think about with regard to those policies. And so, again, we look forward to having them with us, and we'll hear more about them, and be introduced to them shortly in the next section. And secondly, we will discuss, I believe I've indicated this previously, but I will share with you some of the feedback that we've received already in the forums, especially in the forums, but even outside of the forums. I've gotten some emails and have had some meetings with various members of the team, or, and members of the community. And so, I will be sharing that during the information section, information only, and want to be clear that what I'll be sharing is just what we've heard, not how we've processed, not any decisions we've made about changes to the, to the plan, but just trying to chronicle, because we've gotten a lot of feedback from a lot of places, on a lot of aspects of the, of the optimization plan. And so, I want to play back for you what we've been hearing, and there's probably some other things that you've been hearing, likely some discussion we'll want to have, but I just want to signal that I'll be doing that shortly. With that, Dr. Sevak, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to you.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Green. We will now move on to our public comment portion of the meeting, and we do have public comments this evening, board members. I would just like to remind community members who would like to make public comments, they should email their requests to Ms. Rosalyn Williams at roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us, no later than 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, or appear in person in the boardroom no later than 5:15 the day before the meeting. Before we begin, just want to set expectations. Comments are three minutes. Attorney Turner will keep the minutes, and so we'll let you know when there's one minute left. The board believes the public comment is very important. We will listen, we will consider the comments, we will not respond at this time. As always, if there is an issue that has not been taken up with leadership at a particular school or with administration, we encourage this. Also, all of us can be reached via the website, our email addresses are there, and we do, I think every board member here encourages engagement. So Attorney Turner, with that, if you could call up our first person.
Board members, we have two persons who've signed up to address you this evening. The first is Bishop Crutop. He's going to address your support of the optimization plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Dr. Green and to this board, and to all the staff and everybody that's here. Of course, I'm Bishop Ronnie Crutop, senior pastor of New Horizon Church here in town, and a proud graduate myself of Jackson Public Schools. All of my children are graduates of Jackson Public Schools. I have eight grandchildren. One of them is a graduate of Jackson Public Schools, and at this point, seven of them are students of Jackson Public Schools, all right? And so, and I pass to hundreds of children presently that go to Jackson Public Schools, and so I'm vested in Jackson Public Schools. And I'm here this evening to say that I support the optimization plan. I trust what you're doing. I understand that these are days in terms of hard decisions that have to be made in light of the circumstances that we're in. But I also want to say that I hope that you will continue your listening sessions, and also come up with even more creative ways to solve some of the decisions right now. Some of the seemingly decisions that are made in this plan are particularly around, frankly, Because everybody's passionate about their schools, but particularly high school people are even more passionate. And I hear that a lot in the community. I wish that we were not here, but the reality is, we are here because of loss of population in the city, which is not a problem of Jackson Public Schools, it's a problem of the city of Jackson, that now you have to deal with. Because of your past success, particularly in terms of seeing this school system rebound and see our test scores going up, I trust that you're going to make a good decision. But of course, with trust, we also hold your feet to the fire. And so, once again, I support the optimization plan as we go forward. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Bishop Crutop.
Next is Trishika Melvin, Community Voice on Optimization Plan.
Good evening, esteemed board members, Dr. Green, district leadership, and JPS community. My name is Trishika Melvin, and I am a proud JPS alum, Jim Hill High School to be specific. And I have had the pleasure in my professional life to work with many JPS students and families and community members. And so, tonight, I am speaking briefly to you on behalf of a coalition of organizations and individuals deeply invested in the future of our young people and the success of our school district and city. We appreciate the district's recent efforts to hold several town hall meetings in regards to the optimization plan. We also know that there are many people across the city who still have ideas, hopes, and resources that they can contribute to the conversation. There are currently various community-led efforts, as I'm sure you all have heard, some of that speak to the optimization plan and the future of our district, and we ask that in the coming weeks, as we share written feedback and recommendations on a collective vision forward, that these community responses are given thoughtful consideration and are collaboratively integrated into district plans and processes for the future. Thank you all for your time, for your service to our students, and for your role in recognizing the community voice in shaping these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melvin.
That's all.
Thank you, Attorney Turner. All right. I believe we will come to the student part of the meeting, and we have the introduction of our student board members, which is one of our favorite times of year, and of course, the feedback that the students bring is usually, almost always, the best part of the meeting. So Ms. Marshall Thomas, without further ado, we'll turn it over to you to shepherd us through this part of the meeting.
All right. Great evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Sevak, board members, Dr. Green, JPS family and friends. As Dr. Sevak has stated, and Dr. Green, this is really the highlight of our board meetings, is having the opportunities to hear the voices of those that we serve, and those are our students. And so, tonight, we will introduce our 2023-2024 Student School Board Representatives. And we have representation from each of the seven high schools, including the JPS Tugulu Early College High School, and we also have the administrative interns that will serve as mentors for these young people at their home schools. And so, without further ado, I will introduce them in alphabetical order, but they will come up in their own fashion. So we have, for Callaway High School, we have Aleah Price. Aleah will introduce herself, but just stand Aleah, you can come up. All of you all actually can come up along with the intern. And we have Ms. Carmen Taylor. Carmen serves as the administrative intern for Callaway. Carmen is a 10th grade counselor. She's also our JPS Counselor of the Year.
Okay.
Next, we have Jasmine Thomas. Jasmine represents Forest Hill High School. And the administrative intern and mentor is Angela Hawkins. Ms. Hawkins is a six-year teacher there at Forest Hill High School, and she teaches computer science and engineering course. Jim Hill High School, we have William Merritt V. Administrative intern is Olivia Cody. Olivia serves as the lead interventionist at Jim Hill. Next, we have Lanier High School. We have Zayanna Hale. Administrative intern and mentor for Zayanna is Ms. Kimberly Archie. Ms. Archie is a 22-year veteran there, and she teaches Advanced Placement English Language and Composition. Next, we have for Murrah High School, Casey Clark. Administrative intern and mentor is Rakisha Goler. Ms. Goler serves as the dean of students at Murrah. For Provon High School, we have Malcolm Wilson. Administrative intern and mentor is Ms. Latipa Johnson. For Wingfield High School, we have Eva Dos. Administrative intern for Eva is Ms. Frankie Johnson. She's also the dean of students at Wingfield. Lastly, we have for our JPS Tugulu Early College High School, we have Jerry Palmer. Administrative intern is Ms. Precious Thurman, and she's the English teacher there. And so, at this time, you all, very briefly, they will come to you in their own voice just to introduce themselves to the new, to their JPS family and friends.
My name is Aleah Price. I am a senior at Callaway High School. My plans after high school is to join the National Guard and become a registered nurse. I am excited to serve as my school's school board representative because I want to be the voice of the scholars at Callaway and make sure all their ideas are heard. Thank you, and I look forward to working with you guys.
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Thomas, and I am a junior at Forest Hill High School. My plans after school are to attend Spelman University and study biology to become a biologist in the future. I'm excited to be my school's board representative because I have a personal interest in making sure that my school system is good. And I look forward to working with you all in the future. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Oh, good afternoon. My name is William Merritt. I'm a senior at Jim Hill High School. My plans after high school is to attend Grandville State University, majoring in biomedical sciences and major, and minor in African-American studies, and then attend Morehouse School of Medicine and become a cardiothoracic surgeon. And I'm excited to be a student school, a student school board representative because I feel like it would give me a chance to get in touch more with other students in my community and better understand their ideas and bring it to you all. I look forward to working with you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Helen, all the way from 833 Maple Street, I bring you mighty bulldog greetings from Lanier Junior Senior High School, a thriving academia located in the heart of Jackson. We are the home of scholars and champions under the leadership of Dr. Valerie Bradley. Now allow me to introduce myself. I am Zayanna D. Hale, an established senior who will be graduated on May 31st, 2024. I would also like to highlight that I am a scholar athlete involved in band, cheer, powerlifting softball, and the community, who consistently maintains honor roll status. My strive for excellence is fueled by my desire to be the absolute best I can be. I was recently crowned as Miss Senior and inducted as the JMG Jaws from Mississippi Graduates President. Other honors include the National Honor Society, where I served as the Public Relations Coordinator, HOOZU, HOSO, which stands for Health Occupation Students of America, and a member of the State Superintendent Student Advisory Council. I would be remiss if I did not mention that I'm also a longtime member of New Jerusalem Church, pastor by Duane K. Peake. I've been described by my peers as being very helpful, dependable, outspoken, caring, and supportive. My teachers often depend on me to complete important tasks for them. I am trustworthy, zealous, and hardworking. In fact, my constant expectation of myself is excellence in everything. I also have the privilege of being mentored by philanthropist Dr. Madam Muger, the CEO and founder of the SHEP Project. As a 2022 USDA Grip Tape Agent for Change recipient, I stay abreast of the latest trends and developments in agriculture. Most weekends, you can find me on cotton farms, readying crops, setting raccoon traps, flying drones, or simply weeding the garden. My motto is SOAR, that's S-O-A-R, surpass obstacles and rise. And while my college has not been yet determined, I have successfully applied and been accepted into sixth so far. I plan on enrolling at the University of College that offers agriculture economics so that I can pursue a career as an integrated crop specialist. Nevertheless, I will enter as a freshman with hours and experience. I am elated to serve and proudly stand as solidary with my fellow advisory constituents as educational liaisons. Moreover, I eagerly anticipate collaborating with all of you to practice equity, believe in excellence, have a growth mindset, stay relevant, build relationships, and most importantly, build a culture that is positive and respectful. Thank you.
That's going to be a tough act to follow. But good evening. My name is Casey Clark, and I attend the illustrious Murrah High School. My future plans and aspirations is to graduate high school with honors, continue my hair business, and have it grow and grow consistently while I'm in college, whether that be in Mississippi or out of state, but preferably at a HBCU. I plan to major in business and entrepreneurship, and minor in marketing and international business, and to further my knowledge, no matter what institution I plan on attending. I plan to get involved in organizations and clubs, make connections like never before, and eventually graduate college and continue my life. I am excited to serve as my school's student board representative because I can provide ideas, knowledge, and information about my school to the board, provide assistance for my administrators, principals, and staff, and to be a source that students can use to give their ideas, and also report back to my student council about what progress has been made in the meetings and things of that nature. Thank you for having me.
Good evening. My name is Malcolm Wilson. I'm the student body vice president for Provon High School. I am excited to be a student body board member because I want to be the voice for my classmates and help them understand the things that we're going through in our community. After college, after high school, I tend to, I tend to go to Holmes Community College to become a veterinarian and help animals because I feel like animals are just like people, and everyone should be cared for. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
How are y'all doing?
Great.
I have to come up here and express a little bit of my authenticity so that I can be comfortable because your girl got a little anxiety, just a little bit, y'all. But I'm not going to take too long, I'm going to go ahead and get into it. My name is Eva Dos, and I am 17 years old. I am a senior at Wingfield High School. Don't shut us down, y'all. Please, please, y'all, we have been doing so good, we've overcome a lot of obstacles. But I just had to leave with that, of course, of course.
My name is Eva Dos, and I am a senior at Wingfield High School. My future plans and aspirations are a plan on attending Mississippi State University and majoring in psychology and business. I want to serve four years in the Army Reserve in order to pay for college. I am excited to serve my school's student board representative because people say that the JPS system is in constant need of improvement. I would like to help with making sure that the improvements are made. I know that I have a voice, and in being provided with a direct role in improvement that every, let me slow down. People say that the JPS system is in constant need of improvement. I would like to help with making sure that the improvements are made because I know that I have a voice, and in being provided with direct role in improving the educational resources of the student population in Mississippi, especially JPS, I would be able to use my voice to advocate to administrators and even peers by expressing my strong opinions and concerns. I am a leader, and I will do everything in my ability to make a change in something or even someone I believe in. Most importantly, I know I have a strong desire to achieve my goals, and being a school board student representative is one of many. I am more than excited to be standing before you all today representing Wingfield High School. I started the closing part of my introduction wanting to use fancy words and proper grammar to show my presidency and what I have to offer this year's 2023 to 2024 Student Board as representative. It was not until I started typing that I realized I can show my character and potential by remaining in my own authenticity. Standing up on this platform today, it is proving to me that I can do anything I put my mind to. Anything I say, I will do. I can do those things as long as I stay focused and put my mind to it. I want to thank God for instilling such a bright light within me to come before you all today and express my authenticity, even with the stuttering words and the giggles and the saying words wrong that I know I can say right. I want to thank my mom more than anything. She's a single mother of four, and every day seeing her work hard between two jobs, it motivates me to get the future that I want. Living in JPS, we all know it is not easy. It's hard to see beyond the things that we see every day. It's hard to believe that you will get a future outside of the potholes and walking, seeing people walking up and down the streets. But we can, y'all. We really can. Anything we want to do, we can do it, as long as we stay focused and we see the vision in front of us. Don't let the distractions get to you because the devil working. He working just like God, y'all. And I just want to say, more than anything, God, thank you publicly in front of all these people, because my junior year was not the easiest. I had a hard junior year, you all, and overcoming that has really just shown me that no matter how hard things get, or how it seems like you can't get through this, or you can't get through that, you can. And I just want to have a good time tonight, and we everyone, and get to know you all just a little better, and consider this something more than just a meeting. This is a time for us to get to know each other, this is a time for us to come together and work for our community, this is a time to show people that Jackson has something. We are way more than what they portray us to be, y'all. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nick. My name is Jerry Palmer Junior, and I am a senior at the JPS Tugulu Early College High School, and I'm also a Mr. Senior there. My plans after high school is to either attend Tugulu College or the University of Mississippi majoring in psychology. I'm excited to serve as my school's student board representative because I believe that this opportunity will allow me to voice the concerns of the students at my school and their concerns, perspectives, and opinions, and give it a platform to be addressed here in front of a place where it matters. Well, it matters everywhere, but a place where action can be taken. I also believe that working alongside these other schools and the administration will allow us to enhance the quality of education at JPS. And that is all I have. Thank you. Good to have you.
And that is why we say it is the best part of our school board meeting. Board members, I invite you to make any comments to welcome our newest school board members from our schools.
I'm excited. I'm excited to work with you all. I mean, I'm always excited, and just hearing from you all tonight, you all did just such a wonderful job of introductions, and just kept waiting to hear some of your ideas, some of your solutions, some of your creative thoughts on, you know, where we can go forward with our district. It just, it just energizes me to hear you, youth and young voices, and you all have some powerful voices, and I appreciate you all applying to be a part of the board. Welcome.
I would like to say to each of you, congratulations on having been chosen for this prestigious I can tell, or we can tell by your comments, that you're going to keep our feet to the fire, and we appreciate that. We wish you much, much success in your future endeavors and everything you do. Thank you for being excellent role models for your classmates, your friends, family members, for everybody. We see that it's there. Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll start with a simple one, and that's just wow. My kids will tell you, right, that I could cry like that, right? So I would love to tell you that I got energy out of that and everything, but really what I did, part of the time y'all were talking, is fall back tears, right? I have two kids that are in JPS right now. I have a third that will start
Um, I, my kids will tell you, right, that I could cry like that, right? So, um, I would love to tell you that I got energy out of that and everything, but really what I did, part of the time y'all were talking, is fall back tears, right? Um, I have two kids that are in JPS right now. Um, I have a third that will start soon. Um, I hope they look like y'all when they finish, okay? Um, I'm very, very, very excited to hear every idea, every thought that y'all want to share with us. Um, it is my experience, the students in this district are brimming with opinions and wisdom that is beyond their years, and I think y'all embody the people that you represent, okay? Um, it's always special, and I hope y'all feel that when you are representative of someone else, when you stand for them. Um, it means a lot. It means a lot of what they think of you, and it means that you have to bear a burden. Um, and I, I, I think they chose well. Uh, everybody that got up there to speak, that, that was something, right? And, um, absolutely, I'm excited to have you all here, and it is the best part of this.
Honorable Superintendent, Board Chair, my colleagues here on the board, and our administration, administrative staff, we have just met our future. With their passion, all they need is just a little bit more information, just a little bit more, and in a few years, in time permit, they'll be sitting in these seats or in seats similar to these in some part of this earth. For where we are now, young people, I lay no blame on the difficulties and the challenges that we face other than the state of Mississippi that has tried to restrict and keep conditions as close as possible to the way that things existed before 1861. But with your determination and your resistance and resourcefulness, we can make a difference, create a better life and a fair deal for our posterity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Figgers, and I'll just close with two things. First, um, I really encourage you to use your mentors. Um, not every student in high school has a mentor at this stage. Um, I've seen some of them work, and they were handpicked for you because they are among the best of the best. Take advantage of that resource. Second, I want to share a story about how the student board members made a difference last year. A concern was brought to the board around public safety, and the administration responded by proposing to the board a clear bag policy. Had this board passed that policy right now, you would not be able to take your backpacks in the schools. You would be required to use a school district administered clear bag to go in and out of the school. We struggled with that. That policy review covered three or four board meetings, and we pushed the administration to come up with other alternatives and to engage our student board members. And so, um, I can't remember the student that did a presentation, but there was data that was captured from the students in one of the schools that gave an opinion on this policy. Would it work? Do you think it will work? How do you feel? Do you have any other ideas? Ultimately, we did not end up, I think that we didn't end up voting on it, um, and the administration went a different direction. When you walk into your schools now, there's new systems that flag if there's something that needs to be looked in your bags, that allows for people to walk through more quickly. Um, had the student, school board members not spoken up and gotten that data and not positioned us as a board to push the administration for other alternatives, the school might have looked very different. So I just want to share that story with you to know your voice matters. We need you, um, and we need you to go and, and, and express what the students in your schools are feeling, hearing, and frankly, want us to do. Um, so, thank you. And Ms. Marshall Thomas, as always, um, great work.
Dr. Green?
Yeah, please, Dr. Green.
I, uh, I feel a lot like, um, Mr. McGuffey. I was fighting back some emotions as you all spoke. One, just remembering some of my own experiences, um, as a high schooler and tapped to serve in representative roles and nervous, anxious, all those things, but still feeling like I had something to bring to the table, wanting to serve. But, you know, it's a challenge sometimes to put yourself out there. Today is a challenge as a older person. I'm just a few years older than you all. Person, um, you know, it's a challenge to put yourself out there and to lead, um, to have people share their opinions about your leadership, what you're doing or not doing, what you think or don't think. And, and so, you know, this year has presented more than our fair share of challenges to Jackson Public Schools. And so, all of that was kind of running through my mind as I was listening to you all. And just excited to have another cadre, another cohort of young people. Some of you I've seen, maybe we've met, but, you know, I'm always just so thankful when I get to meet more and more of the amazing talent and the voices and the, and the vision and the heart that sits in across all our schools throughout the district. Um, and, and unlike some of our principals and, and others working in schools, I just don't have that opportunity always. So this is hugely, hugely, um, um, touching, uh, to me, but it's, it's just really important that we have this opportunity, and I do hope that you will take advantage of it. Hopefully, you will find some things in the district that you want to challenge us to do more of or to continue to do as well as the things that we absolutely need to change. Um, and last bit of, um, just encouragement, and I think one of you stated this. Not everyone will have this opportunity to develop these kinds of relationships across schools. And so I do encourage you, as well as tapping, really tapping into your mentors, um, building a stronger network amongst yourselves. Just think about the power that you could wield as a collective representatives across the district. It's great to bring your perspectives individually or as a school, but imagine if all eight of you brought a perspective about a thing and, and what strength that would have, um, for us as we think about where we go next. So just some thoughts for you. I'm, I'm really glad to welcome you. I'm proud of you already. Can only imagine that you're gonna wow us over the course of the year, and I'll just, you know, eat my Wheaties and take some naps because I'm sure you'll have us working hard, but as it should be. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Can we still get Wheaties at the store?
Oh, I said that, didn't I?
I'm just messing.
I don't know. Online, I'm sure somebody's selling them.
All right, um, we'll go, we'll continue with our information.
Can we get one more, just?
Sure, absolutely. One more round with us. All right. Thanks, Mr. McGuffey. All right, now we'll invite out Mr. Warren Bowen with Triage Facility. We have our ESR three monthly update. Um, this is our update on our facility improvements that we are making with the federal funds to respond to COVID. Mr. Bowen?
Well, thank you, and, uh, good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
It's certainly a pleasure, Dr. Green, Boyd, Mr. Turner. I appreciate you all allowing us to be here. Um, board members, I know you already have right now a hard copy of the presentation. Uh, the progress of the projects are moving really good, you know, fairly aggressive, to be frank about it. Um, but for the sake of time tonight, um, I won't go into every project. I'll do those projects, um, uh, in order to save some time that, uh, we have some significant issues, not issues, but, uh, information I want to share with you. So the first project will be, uh, and I'm sorry, let's go back. This project represents September the sixteenth through October the fifteenth. Uh, the first project that we will deal with and I will discuss tonight will actually be, uh, Witten. Witten Middle School, uh, it's a $789,814 project. The project, uh, was on schedule to be substantially completed by November the first. Having a contractor requested thirty additional days because of some equipment delays. With that, we've had some real come to Jesus meeting with him and expect them to be, uh, wrapped up on or before December the first. Our next project, uh, that is part of this review is our Boyd project, which is my next one. Boyd Elementary School is a $275,000 project. Uh, it's on time and substantially complete as of October the thirtieth. It was substantially complete. However, we had some additional funds, um, uh, in our contingency fund, and we added to that scope, uh, replasst in the bath and painting three of the restrooms, which they really, really needed. And it still fell within our numbers that we had set aside for that budget. Uh, and that, that contractor also requesting additional thirty days for those items to be done, um, and so that's where we are. And that is expected to be wrapped up by December the fifteenth. Um, the next item would be Boyd, I mean, sorry, Bayley APAC. Bayley APAC is a big project, an aggressive project, and a lot has happened. You know, we've got the new mechanical walls being placed on the, uh, on the outside. Uh, our old borders, all old borders have been broken down and abated and removed. Um, our four-pipe new, uh, four-pipe toilet system has been, uh, the four-pipe system has been in place, been put in place, which is a very difficult thing in a building that old, to run a four-pipe system throughout the building. The structural steel members are being installed at the gym currently, and, um, the auditorium is fully scaffold. You go in, there's a whole nother floor so they can work up top. Um, and half of the, uh, the wall steel members have been put in place. As of today, that project is eight, as of that day, that project was eight point eight one percent complete. Today, it is roughly around twelve, thirteen percent complete. Um, the next item I would go, for the sake of time, too, would be our most recent, uh, awarded and executed contracts. And I'll get straight to that. I'm back, I'm sorry. Um, the career development project is on track, and it started, they physically started work on Monday. And just so, sorry, so you all would know, um, outside of Thanksgiving Day and maybe that Friday, uh, the workers will work through the holiday up to, uh, Thanksgiving Day. So we put a little pressure on that. That, uh, career development project, uh, $2,864,000. Um, and, uh, it is a 240-day project. The Package B Callaway, Kirksey, North Jackson, McWilliam, HBAC improvements. Uh, and that again, uh, speaks to Ms. Robinson's, uh, level of efficiency in our projects by putting those packages together. Uh, that contract amounts $2,447,600. That contract, uh, is due to be substantially completed November twenty eighth to twenty four. Um, four hundred days. Of course, you know, we are gonna be pushing to get ahead of that deadline because I don't really need any, uh, any room in a project like that because we're so close to our final deadline. So outside of that, um, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to. Also, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Board members, any questions?
Um, I've, I've got a few. Um, I wanted to ask, just, uh, for my own curiosity, frankly, on about, um, one of the projects you didn't touch on, Jim Hill. You know, we toured that school. It had a lot of, um, heating and air, uh, issues at the beginning of the school year. Could you kind of tell me, I, I'm just interested to know what the new chillers, the new boilers, the new packaging, and it's like, what sections of that school they actually service and how things are going and all of that?
Well, first of all, the project's going well. My Jim Hill representative is Melvin. Melvin? Um, we have, uh, specific people assigned to certain projects, and they are there actually every day. Uh, we just, it just, we just don't have it in Rome. So Melvin can give you an update on those chillers very quickly?
Yeah, the boilers are installed right now. The chillers have not been delivered yet. Specifically, uh, you want to know what exactly, what section of the city?
Yeah, I said, what I was wondering is when I, when I was there, you know, one of the wings was at, was, was not in use, uh, another one of the...
Well, that wing is not in use. That is definitely being served by the chiller.
Okay, so that's still, that's, that, is that, that's not the ninth grade? That was like where the, uh, auditorium and everything was, right?
Right, ninth grade. Go ahead.
Yeah, I believe that is the ninth grade.
Yeah.
Ninth grade is not...
There's still no kids there.
This is not the, can someone speak to, the ninth grade project is, this is not including the ninth grade project?
It does not include, no, it does not include our ninth grade project. The ninth grade project.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to, that's really what I was trying to figure out. Um, I think that answered my question. That's all I wanted to know. Um, second question I've got is just, I, I'm gonna prod a little bit on Bailey, and this may not even be the right time to, to ask, but has there been any shift? I, I know, um, from the outside, uh, some of the work that's been done, has there been any shift or is there any change or update on targeted completion dates or anything like that? Am we too far out to know that answer?
Right now, it's scheduled to be completed September first of 2024. And it's on schedule right now.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And obviously, that doesn't work with the start of our school year. So...
That, that, that's a different question. That, my question was more, when I was looking at the information that we provided, the, the, the reason I asked, right, I guess it's fair to say. The reason I asked is on the information provided, it's, it's a targeted 435-day, uh, contract days or a hundred and eight in, that's as a rough ballpark, twenty-five percent. And you, and, and you shared that it was twelve to thirteen percent completed. I understand sometimes those things, the, the, they're not a day-to-day match, right? Like, you don't get one percent every time.
No, by no means. And, and one of the biggest issues with projects of that size is receiving the equipment. Once the equipment is on ground, the project moves fast. But you've got to get the equipment there to install, and that's one of our biggest challenges.
As a person who renovated a house in Bell Haven, I, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Are there any, um, any challenges that you've seen to that? I think you've spoken to this, but just want to make sure. Are there any challenges to the Bailey project that you anticipate would push the delivery date out beyond September one?
No, sir. No, sir. Unless we get something that's really in left field as ready to equip, equipment. But right now, when I tell you they are, they are, they harming, they harming right now. They are.
So we're not gonna be sending any federal money back to DC?
My plan is hopefully to spend a little bit more. Okay? Yeah, that's not our plan at all.
Mr. Bur. Did you hear the question? You have any further commentary on that? And then I'll ask Dr. Merritt to speak as well.
Yeah, we're making every effort to spend every dollar that we've been allocating.
Dr. Merritt, anything you want to add to this?
And how do we feel? I mean, I mean, I understand the hedging language, but are, are we gonna, do you feel confident we're gonna get there?
Dr. Merritt, why don't you speak to some of the efforts to...
Great evening, everyone. Uh, as it relates to the, uh, the art money that we're spending now, I'm very confident as long as our construction projects, which I believe is approximately fifty-six percent of our budget, as long as that remains on schedule, we will be fine. The other funds are, uh, associated with instructional programming and things of that nature, we will definitely spend that. Um, we'll be in good shape. But as long as our construction projects remain on schedule, we will exhaust all funds.
Just share a little more on the, the monitoring process that you've got in place for all of the, um, federal spending, working with the team to...
So, yes, sir. So there is a monthly meeting where Mr. Bur, Ms. Robinson, Dr. Scott, and myself, we sit down and we review, um, our plan, one, to see if any adjustments need to be made. Um, and should adjustments need to be made, we do complete a revision um, as we, um, monitor our budget and plan. So not only are we monitoring our budget, but we're monitoring our plan because if adjustments have to be made, we have to submit those changes to, uh, the Mississippi Department of Education. So we have monthly check-ins to where we, um, we check and verify among ourselves to ensure that everything is staying, um, on point and that we are expending, uh, the funds.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the... Thank you for the update.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
I'll roll this to the end right quickly. Thank you.
All right, from that update, we'll move into our feedback regarding the optimization plan. And I believe Dr. Green is gonna present this information.
Yes, yes, sir. As I indicated earlier, I wanted to come back to you, board members, and to the community, just to share some of the things that we've been hearing. Now, this may not be completely exhaustive, a completely exhaustive list, but, you know, as we're committing to listening to community members and even other team members and processing that feedback and running the traps, looking at, and by that I mean, looking at the implications of this change or that change and just all those things. Wanted to not wait until we came back with a revised plan, but at this point, just to pause, step back and play back to you what we've been hearing. What I'm sharing with you is not a decision to pivot the proposed plan this way or that way. And some of the things that I'll share are in conflict, and you'll see that pretty quickly. So this is not a revised plan. This is just us playing back the feedback that we've got, that we absolutely are taking seriously and, and consideration. Okay. That's it. So the first bit of feedback is just more general and just wanted to, again, publicly share some of what we're hearing. One, we've heard that the proposal seems to have come out of nowhere and all of a sudden. And while I certainly believe we've been talking about our challenges with enrollment and funding, we're hearing and appreciate that, that this is the lived experience of some of our community members, that they didn't feel like there was enough signaling that we were coming with a plan for optimization. We've heard, quite simply, don't close our schools, period. Don't close the schools. So, that's part of the feedback. We've also heard that we should've closed these schools years ago. And perhaps some others, but we've heard that feedback. We've heard that this plan, this proposed plan seems to focus on money and not on scholars. And of course, as we're reflecting on the presentations we've done in community forums and trying to lay the case for, excuse me, how we're funded and how enrollment impacts our funding and therefore our ability to address schools or provide resourcing to our schools. Again, we appreciate this feedback here. There's been some discussion about the declining enrollment and questions as to, well, where have the scholars gone? And we've tried to address that, but I think there continues to be some wonderings, questions about the decline, the decline in enrollment. Is there something we could or should've done to stave off the decline in enrollment? Perhaps some distrust, disbelief in the numbers that we presented in terms of declining enrollment. But that's been, I believe, fairly consistent questioning with regard to decline in enrollment. We've heard, you can't murder certain communities with other communities. They are in conflict and it'll, you'll only breed more conflict. We certainly heard that specific to Wingfield. And most especially with, with Wingfield and Forest Hill and the consideration of merging those schools and school communities. And I believe I've pretty emphatically resisted this notion that that has to be. But the reality, there are some realities that we acknowledge that, that some scholars are in conflict with others. And in the very least, we need to be aware of this and be programming and considering that as we move forward. Even if, regardless of where the scholars are going to school, that, you know, this conflict is something that we've got to continue to take seriously and take some actions around. We've heard this question and not just the question, but the concern about vacant buildings. What will, what will we do with any vacant buildings that we have or any additional vacant buildings? We've seen news reports and, and, you know, there's been lots in commentary in our forums about the buildings. And so this is certainly an area where we've been challenged, excuse me, to think more about, to plan more specifically and to produce more details around. We've also heard questions basically around the two thousand and eighteen bond funds. And paraphrasing, but basically, why didn't we fix our buildings with the two thousand and eighteen bond funds? If that's an issue that we're seeing right now, why wasn't that addressed with those bond funds? And, you know, in, partially in response, we've tried to articulate that those funds, where we were able to do a lot with those funds, but the needs far exceeded the amount of funds that we had there, which is why we're even now spending fifty, sixty-plus million dollars of the American Recovery Act or Recovery Plan dollars to address building needs. Those needs are just significant. Significant still seems to pale and not capture the needs of our, in our facilities. But that's, but that's a concern and one that's been raised a few times as we've been listening to reactions to our proposed plan. More of what we've heard, we should really close all but three high schools and build new buildings for them. And so while, you know, there are those who are saying, don't close our schools, don't close our high schools especially, we've, we've heard more than once from individuals who would like to see us consolidate more of the high schools and cast a vision and, and some planning for new, robust campuses for our high schools that would rival some of the campuses that we see in neighboring districts that really look like community colleges to me. So that's pretty compelling, that feedback. We've heard calls for the board to delay the vote on this proposal. And, you know, lots of conversation around that, what the delay would accomplish. I think from my standpoint, for all the things that it might accomplish, continuing this conversation about school closures is, the weight of that and the, and the downside to that is equal, if not greater, than any upside to a delay. I certainly am of the mind that up or down, a decision needs to be made so that we can live into that decision, figure out how we go forward with wherever, whatever direction we're taking. Can't we get more or get some grant dollars? This has come up a couple of times. We've been asked about our internal capacity to write for grants. And, you know, we've been asked, have we gone after this grant or gone after that grant? Or aren't there grant dollars to help us to keep the buildings open? And without providing a robust response to this now, I will say that while there are grants and we are actually utilizing our networks to make, to take advantage of whether they're grants or, or federal funds or state funds available to help us to address some of our needs, some of our building needs or some of our program needs. I think there's a romanticized view of what's out there and how we, how it can be used to address our schools. Quite simply, what I would say, and I believe I stated this in one of the forums, is that most, in most cases, grant funds are intended to help to be additive to what the state or, or local government is to provide and not to supplant. And so to think that we can go out and get grant funds to do what we are supposed to be doing, what our state is supposed to be doing to upkeep our buildings is, I think that falls a little short of the reality there. And at the same time, there's, there's, there's lots of infrastructure monies out there. And so there's some strong efforts, board members, I can say this, some strong effort in using our network of elected officials and on the state and, and national, well, especially the national level to help us to identify some resources that may not be as clearly delineated for some of our needs but for which we might be able to qualify and tap into. So there's some hope there. I'm, I'm losing track of where this feedback came from, but we have gotten the feedback that, you know, if we're to go forward with some, some level of school closure or consolidation, we should consider staggering that or phasing it. And certainly as, excuse me, and certainly as we are facing some facilities' timeline challenges, this, this recommendation or this feedback is being considered more and more. Almost out of necessity, but more on that. We have received feedback from, I believe it was at a forum, that someone stated, asked the question or stated the concern that the closures and consolidations will place great, even greater strain on our transportation. And, you know, this is for sure a concern for us. And, and so there's some, some work being done to rethink how we provide transportation now. But this is certainly something that, again, should, should our plan, a plan move forward for closure and consolidation, one that will need to access additional resourcing and additional strategies. We can't just do more of what we're doing because that won't be enough. And so likely additional strategies and resources to transport our scholars and not just our internal capacity. This feedback has come up a few times in concerns that too many of our school, too many of the schools identified in the proposed plan are located in South Jackson. And, and I actually would agree that too many of them are in, in South Jackson. Sadly, this is following the enrollment trends. And so too many of our schools in the South Jackson neighborhoods are experiencing the greatest amount of decline in enrollment. And so sadly, that's where more of the pain of the declining enrollment is being felt. And so there's certainly some truth in this and there's some reality in the conditions causing this. All right, so that was some general feedback that we've received and that I wanted to play back to you in earnest. Here are some recommended revisions to the optimization plan. Again, I wanna stress, these are not, none of this is decided because we gotta take it all to the board for, as a proposal for action. But we internally have not, have not officially adopted some of these recommendations as the proposal that we're making, but ones that we're looking more closely at to see how they fit together and what, what could work, especially if there's some public support for some of these pivots. All right, for Wingfield, you've heard again tonight and we've heard very consistently, don't close our school, don't close our high school. One way to rethink the closure and consolidation of Wingfield is to merge, to allow Wingfield to remain and to merge Witten Middle School with Wingfield. That's one recommendation that we've heard. We've also heard that we might consider operating, so this would be no longer operating the high school in Wingfield, but operating the building as a large elementary in South Jackson. And so merging several elementary schools together in the Wingfield building. Just recommendations that have been made to us. Another is to keep Green Elementary School open. We'll have to look some more at the enrollment there, but there's an argument that the enrollment in the school is pretty strong from that neighborhood. And board members, I think you know, but just to make sure that everyone's clear on this, many of our schools, even with lower enrollment, have scholars who are not in the immediate neighborhood. And so we've got a lot of, a lot of transportation from outside of the school neighborhoods that, that's just a part of kind of our, our district right now. But there's an argument that there's a fairly strong, solid enrollment from the surrounding community around Green and that that's, you know, some, an argument to maintain the school as an elementary school serving there. Also, Green, the, the team at Green Elementary, along with some central office folks and some arts leaders, have been working to develop a school-wide, a whole school arts program similar to what we offer at Casey Elementary School. And so, you know, there's a, again, a strong argument that there's some momentum there, a vision there and, you know, something that we will want to reconsider and not wanna lose from what's already been started there. We've also been encouraged to keep Key Elementary School open. And I'm not giving you all the counterpoints to these, I'm just sharing what's been shared. Keep Key Elementary School open and instead to merge Wilkins Elementary to Key as well as to Oak Forest. And part of the argument there is, one, that Key is on a major thoroughfare that would make it easier to access and, you know, really want a school building on a major thoroughfare that's not in, in, in action, in operation. But also concerns about the Wilkins Building, where we've had some serious and persistent water pressure issues that, given to this day, while they're not as bad as they've been, there's, we continue to have some low-grade water pressure challenges there. Excuse me. More feedback that we received. There's a proposal to maintain Gen Smith as an elementary school and to merge Dawson Elementary with Smith Elementary there in that building. And the argument was to maintain a school in that immediate neighborhood. And I can't call the streets around it, but some concern that we would be pulling, we, we would be removing the elementaries in that, that neighborhood and, not just that neighborhood, in that section of town that could be problematic. of town that could be problematic. We've also heard a recommendation to maintain Obama Magnet in the current location, and if for no other reason than because it's so centrally located, it's a district-wide school drawing from all over the city, and it's, again, centrally located and would be a challenge to have it located at the Northwest Campus, Northwest Middle School Campus. We've also heard to keep Clausell Elementary School open, and instead to merge Isible with Clausell in Pecan Park. Excuse me. I've highlighted Isible Elementary here because this is not a school that was previously named, and so for this recommendation to be seriously considered, there's another school community that would be impacted and that we've not been considering to date. And so, just pointing that out. But part of the recommendation and rationale there is that there's a new housing, I believe an apartment building, but some new housing that's opened across from Clausell, and that that may be worth reconsidering the direction of the move, moving Isible to Clausell and not Clausell the other way. And the last of these recommendations is to keep Oak Forest open. The current plan is to close Oak Forest and move the scholars to Marshall, but this recommendation is to do the reverse, to close Marshall and move those scholars to Oak Forest. And so Marshall should actually be highlighted as well. The Oak Forest, and the argument is that the Oak Forest Building is in better condition. I need to look again at the, at the capacity of the two schools, but assuming they're on par. Again, the argument is that the, we determined, someone has determined the Oak Forest Building to be in better condition than the Marshall Building. All right. So, lots of thoughts on, in various iterations, on what could be. Again, to some of the commentary and the concerns around buildings and vacant buildings and repurposing those buildings, we've done some work and have had a number of conversations about what could be with those buildings, and so I want to share some of that. First, just for reuse, buildings that, for the most part, you know, they need some, all of our buildings need some help, some love, some renovation or what have you, but we've been in conversation with two different groups, two different entities, local Jackson entities, who have expressed some interest in operating from the Cywell Campus and another from the Brinkley Campus. And these are, again, known entities that we would certainly be proud to bring to you, board members, as potential partners in acquiring those spaces. So that's just reuse, maybe some investment on their part in the buildings, but barely ready to go. As well, we've had some really robust conversation over, way over several months, but especially over the last couple of months, about these properties for potential redevelopment options. Some of them with entities that have some funds and they're ready to, could be ready in fairly short order to move forward with making those buildings what they need to be for their operations, and in some other cases, perhaps longer-term redevelopment opportunities, but again, with a clear path to some financing, housing, redevelopment, or part of a larger redevelopment area within the city. And so, while there's interest in other buildings, these specifically have been named and have been parts of discussions with some of our local partners or local entities who might be willing to work with us. Now specifically named the Jackson Redevelopment Authority as this is their work, but it's not just them, there are some other entities that are interested in acquiring or doing some redevelopment on various fronts, not the least of which, again, housing. And so, we encouraged by this, actually really encouraged by this, it's like all of a sudden the floodgates are opening, and that doesn't mean that we're there in making, bringing any of this to you as a package, but there's some real energy behind these, and we'll continue working with folks to try to understand what the realities might be, how, you know, how real those options are, and, you know, what's kind of a dream versus closer to a plan. And so, we'd be working those and preparing to bring more of that to you. In addition, I've mentioned this before, but prepared to share with you now, you know, and again, as I said before, some of the earlier recommendations are, some of these recommendations are in conflict, and so you'll see some names up here perhaps that were named previously to go in a different direction, Key being an example. But here are six rules that our team has looked at because of the relatively low potential, at least based on what we can see now, relatively low potential for redevelopment, extremely high cost for renovations, some buildings that we might consider for demolition. And with that, creating some walking trails or green space, athletic fields, or other spaces that the community might want to use and help direct us with regard to that. And of course, the goal here would just to, you know, we would be working to reduce the number of buildings waiting for a project, waiting for redevelopment, waiting for someone to purchase. And so, we believe these are close and make sense for a strong consideration of demolition. And just a reminder that our last scheduled community forum is on the 14th, I believe that's Monday, at Murrah High School, six to seven. I didn't say this earlier, but one of the other big pieces of feedback that we've gotten in the last two forums were concerns about folks not being able to get in the microphone and say what they had on their hearts and share their feedback, and so we're looking at the format of the final community forum, and even the usefulness of my providing the presentation. Again, I think at this point, a lot of people have seen much of what the presentation is or much of what the plan is, that we do something much, much, you know, trimmed down and give an opportunity for folks to share additional feedback. But just wanted to name that and not bury that feedback that we've gotten, we've gotten a good bit of that feedback, some concerns. And I'll say, especially since our scholars were here, there were concerns at one of the forums, especially about scholars not being able to come up to the microphone and share their feedback. And so, that's largely what we've heard. There are probably some things that I missed here, but a lot of what we've heard, both about the plan or this, this effort in total, and specific recommendations or thoughts about where we go next. Happy to take any questions or reactions to any of that, or any additional feedback that you've heard that perhaps we haven't captured here.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Board members, questions, comments?
I'm sorry, that meeting is on Tuesday, the 14th. Sorry.
So, Honorable Superintendent, you said, have we heard any additional that you may not have listed?
Yes, sir.
In your, I do want to echo one that you did list, and that was the ability for people to speak.
No, I was saying, to speak in the mic, yes.
That was one that you did list that I have heard a number of times.
Yes, sir.
And that was in these meetings, these listening sessions, the ability for people to express themselves.
Yes, sir.
Not just scholars, but people.
Everybody.
I agree with that, but maybe it could be something like what we do here as far as give them a limit, a two-minute time limit to, and express that, and then, like you said, not necessarily going over all of the other plan, but maybe even going over what we've heard so far, so they won't have to necessarily come to repeat that, because, you know, this is what we've heard from you all so far, and go over it kind of like what you did tonight, but then give them the two minutes to add to what they feel like was not, was missed.
That's a great idea.
You know, and give them that time to speak there, because it is emotional time for everybody, and I get it, I really do, and that's what a lot of times, people just want to feel heard, and that what, that their voice is mattering in the conversation. So, I agree with that part. The, you know, the only thing, I don't have anything additional, just to just ditto a lot of what you have there as far as for the South Jackson area and the schools, and the ones that are on Main, thoroughfares, as well as Wingfield, to just do whatever we need to do to figure out, you know, to keep that particular school open. I do like the idea of, of, overall, looking toward the future of where we can go with all of the high schools, you know, for better buildings, better campuses, better everything. And it can be definitely layered in and built in together till we get to that point, but we need it, and we need to start thinking like that, you know, whether it's going to be a North Jackson, South Jackson, Central Jackson kind of campuses for our scholars on a very upscaled kind of a college-type environment, you know? We can, we can work towards that eventually in the future, you know, but it just don't need to be taken off the table.
So some of the, I've got like too much swimming in my head, but some of the things that maybe haven't been listed, that aren't listed up here that I've heard, some of that I think we're getting at with repurposing, but it's just, it's just specificity. That's been the request from, from a number of people, especially as it pertains to, especially as it pertains to where a lot of the school moves are interrelated, how curriculum changes are going to work, how, when you're combining schools, what's it going to look like in terms of teacher staffing, and I know that's incredibly complicated. What's it going to look like in terms of changes in offerings for students if they're going, you know, if they're going in from a, from a neighborhood school into a, what I'll call sort of a, the special programs plus neighborhood schools, or if they're going from a four-point school into a five, or, you know, all these different things, like, I think the more specific we can be, and I know that that takes a lot of planning, a lot of time, but the more specific we can be in the recommendations and in the explanations, I think the more it feels like, the more it feels student-centered, and the less it feels like a money decision. I mean, frankly. You know, to piggyback on what Cynthia just said, you know, vision casting for people, what it's going to look like, as opposed to focus solely on the hardship of the decision that has to be made, and it, certainly we can't diminish the hardship, the decision has to be made, but just pushing forward to say, this is why it's good. I've heard that from people just saying that they don't, they don't understand the positive. I would say, I would say, I just want to kind of echo that, I have heard both ends, especially of the high school thing, and you listed them both, but I think it bears repeating that we're not going to be able to please everybody, because there are not, there are a large number of people who want all of these high schools to stay open, and there is a not insignificant number of people who think we got to, we got to consolidate to compete with the Pearl Campus, and we have to consolidate to compete, you know, go look at it, go look around, it's like you said, and you can't, and you almost can't do that if you're going to maintain a large number of high schools. You have to, you have to give that dream away to maintain a large number of schools, because they're going to be 5A high schools probably, something like that. So, I think that just, that's something for us to bear in mind. There's one thing that I want to respond to, and I think you've done an excellent job in the community meetings that I've seen in responding to it, but it's a fairly persistent frustration of mine is about the bond dollar thing and about the bond project thing. Frankly, I don't know how to communicate it. I don't know how you say over and over and over again, that was water in a ba, that was a drop of water in a bathtub, right? Like, it was, you know, we poured a cup in, and it did, lo and behold, the bathtub's not full. It was never intended to fix all the problems. It was intended to solve immediate problems. And on top of that, there's this misunderstanding about how bonds work, I think, that once those projects are named, that's it. That's the projects that are getting done. So it's not as if you could look on that list and say, well, now that we've thought about it, this doesn't feel as important as the issue that's going on over here. You can't shift them, not really. And so, I don't know how else to communicate that to community members. I wish, I wish we could, because it's frustrating, it's disappointing, it feels accusatory at times, and so I just, I wish there was a way to get that across. And I guess the last thing, the last thing I would say is that I want to, I want to take a moment to applaud, and this is just, this is my opinion, one thing that has been reiterated repeatedly, not just in these community sessions, but in prior consolidations that were forced on us. Our kids do not have to be in conflict, and I think the work that you've done to say that over and over and over again, I think the results that we've seen, when we were forced into a consolidation where that did not occur, even though we had multiple warnings that it was inevitable, need to be need to be reiterated over and over and over again, and I, and you are doing that. And so, I just want to say thank you for that, because it's not, it's like you said, it's not ignoring reality. You, there are ways to address the real issues of community conflict, but it diminishes our kids to pretend like they can't learn how to coexist. And, and that crawls up my skin to diminish the kids in this district. So, I want to say thank you for that. If nothing else comes out of this, saying that to our community, that there are no conflicts in the city of Jackson that are too ingrained that our kids can't learn to live beside each other. That does not exist. So, thank you for that.
I want to add to my statement, my comments earlier, and that is that I really want us to really push to do whatever we need to do to not leave the city with a lot of empty spaces. So, I appreciate a lot of the ideas on what we can do on repurposing some of them, if it should be that we have to do this. Repurposing and even or getting rid of and doing our part to do that, to make it the green space or make it whatever it needs to be. It's just a matter of having a plan, and I know that's not what we're in the business of, because we have to educate children, I get it. But we also have to, we gotta bring our community along and educate them too, and let them know what resources are there for them as far as other federal dollars and grant dollars that they could possibly take advantage of to do projects in these buildings in order to help the community overall. So, whatever we need to do to make that marriage happen, to make sure the buildings are still in use, and we don't have empty buildings that are being vandalized and being torn into or vagrants or whatever, I mean, we're getting, you know, the organizations, the churches, whoever we need to contact, and just put, look, everybody, come together, get a plan, because anything that they put in there is going to benefit, whether it's a homeless, day shelter, you know, whether it is senior citizen housing, whatever they can turn around and put in those buildings. Churches, all, come together and figure out what we can do for the buildings that will have to close. Or if they're, if the money is too great to fix them, to demolish them, to get them, you know, so they're not just sitting there empty for years, like the ones that we've had so far. So, that was, that's my push, like, let's not leave the city. And I know it's hard for us as a district, but that will only bring the whole city down as a whole, where people still will be continuously moving out.
I, I think the question that, that I have been asked more often is, what are you all going to do with all of those empty buildings? And my first response to that is, well, they are empty because of the numbers, and that's why I would think that we're in the situation, you know, we gotta look at the numbers, we gotta look, gotta be realistic about, you know, the numbers. So, I was pleased to see the list of potential redevelopment options that you put there. Because as Cynthia just said, you know, we all can lend a hand perhaps in this, because we can seek out companies, whatever, in order to see if this is something that that would benefit you in the project that you want to do and everything. Because I, I don't think that, none of the comments that I have received from individuals were saying that, you know, you need to keep that building open, you know, regardless of whether you can pay the light bill, water bill, gas bill, whatever there. So, that is, that's the area where I have heard the most questions about that. And I know that each of us has, that it's been associated with the district. I know we have, you know, hard feelings about the closing of the schools and that kind of thing, but, you know, it's just like schools, it's just like a house. You got to keep it up, and if it doesn't keep, you don't keep it up, then it's going to go down, and it's going to become an eyesore. And I think as long as we are patient in responding to the questions. And I said the other night when I was at Callaway, I watched you in your presentation, and I said, oh, he is so calm. I don't know if I could be that calm with some of the comments that were being made and everything, you know. I may have, may have flown out the handle, I don't know. But at any rate, let me just commend all of your staff folk that are working so hard on getting all of this together. I think you all are doing an excellent job, and I'm glad I don't have to do it.
So, a few comments. First, I want to thank all of the community members who have come out. We wouldn't have gotten here without that. The comments made tonight, particularly around community voice resonate, and I want to push, Dr. Green, you and District to create spaces to garner as much of that as we can. Number two, Ms. Thompson's comments about the buildings, I want to press you on that too. We need a plan around these buildings. I was, it was great to see what was shared tonight. The more specificity we can get around it, the more comfortable I can get with getting to a vote. My mind's not made up yet, I want to be very clear about that. And it hinges on this question of the buildings. As a, as a community developer, this, this part up until this point felt incomplete. And so, again, want to push, continue to push there, and I frankly think there are people willing to help us. And so am I. Number three, some of the comments made in these public forums have been personal. And so, I want the public to at least hear from the board chair that you have my full support in the seat that you sit in. Regardless of where we end up on this proposal, as I said, my mind's not made up yet, but one thing that is made up is that I'm 100% behind you for the work that you've done, for the team that you've built, and just continue to press us the way we press you. Anything else, Board? All right, let's move on to our information action items. All right, let's take, I'm going to take these, I'm going to ask, actually, let's, let's go ahead and just, I think the first one, I'll ask Dr. Moore to come up, Dr. Smith to come up, Dr. Scott to come up, and Mr. Schommer to come up. We'll take those all in one action, and then we'll, so we'll just have one vote on items B, C, D, and E. And we'll do them in that order. So, Dr. Moore, if you could start with the request to approve the agreement between Authentic Institute of Montessori and the Jackson Public School District to provide professional development services to McWilly Elementary. Dr. Moore?
Good evening, Dr. Seaback, members of the Board, Dr. Green. The administration recommends approval of the memorandum of understanding with Authentic Institute of Montessori and the Jackson Public School District to offer professional development services for McWilly Elementary. This partnership provides directly aligned professional learning opportunities for staff members at McWilly. This agreement will be a strategic and systematic approach to supporting scholar success on annual state MAAP assessment exams and in the Montessori school-based learning model.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Board members, are there any questions regarding this request to approve? Thank you, Dr. Moore. Dr. Smith will next present the request to approve to amend the 2023-2024 instructional management system for the inclusion of the professional learning plan. Dr. Smith?
All right, good evening to our Board members, President Seaback, Dr. Green, IJPS Community, Office of Teaching and Learning, presented the instructional management system in August, and it was approved without the professional learning plan that we want to add to the instructional plan. It includes all of our professional learning and our goals that are aligned to our instructional priorities as well to our instructional protocols.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Board members, any questions, comments?
Great plan.
All right, thank you, Dr. Smith. Next, we have the request to approve the renewal agreement between Renaissance Learning, Inc. and the Jackson Public School District. Dr. Scott will present this information.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Seaback, Dr. Green, Board members, and IJPS family. The administration recommends review and approval of the service agreement for Renaissance Learning Incorporated to provide a general literacy solution for kindergarten through 12th grade students. There are two platforms that fall under this agreement. My Own provides 24/7 access to thousands of books for our students to read, and also news articles. And AR is where they go to be assessed on their comprehension, vocabulary, and thematic knowledge. And so, AR can be used for books that are accessed through My Own as well as other sources that we may have.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Board members, any questions, comments?
I actually do have some questions on the, on the contract in particular. So, this may fair or unfair, we'll find out. The, the quote that was provided in the board materials is, is broken out by school, and then it's also, and then there's a top line number for each term, which is actually one school year. If the makeup of the district shifts within this contract, I reviewed it, and I don't see an out for us to reduce the top line number. Am I right about that? If we have, if the optimization plan went forward tomorrow, if we voted and said yes, you, 16 of the schools that are featured within that, within the quotes, go away.
That's correct. So, the students would still be in the Jackson Public School District, and so, whatever school they're representing, and maybe we would work with Attorney Turner if we need to update the contract to show the enrollment, the new enrollment totals in the subsequent years.
I guess.
But that's normally how we would do it. So, we've had some changes in contracts in previous years where we've had, say, Baker closed, and so what we did was shift the enrollment to Shirley, and because those students are now counted at Shirley, the funding goes to Shirley. So, we would then be able to still provide that, those services for all those students.
So, in effect, what, what we would do instead would be amendments to subsequent term years. I would, I guess I would just, I guess I would just ask for the people who have, I reviewed this contract briefly, for the people who have to make that decision, that we're comfortable with our ability to modify and amend this kind, this particular contract to match whatever the Board's decisions are.
We'll work together.
Yeah, and when I say we'll have to look into that, because, because it's a renewal, then what we look at is the new quote. So, you're right, if there was a shift and we needed to reduce, the contract's not going to allow for that. A reallocation would be fine, as long as the dollar amount stayed in place. That would be fairly easy to do. I don't think we'd have any problems with them. But yeah, if we now need to contemplate, because yet, when we did this contract originally, what will happen is, is if it comes to our office and they say all we're doing is renewing, then as long as we have the same contract, we're going to pass the terms, but the prior contract would not have contemplated the optimization plan. So, it's not going to be built in.
Yeah, so that, I'm just kind of flagging, I'm issues, I'm problem spotting more than anything. It's like a law school test, and all you have to do is point out the flaw, you don't have to fix anything. Everybody look at that, and otherwise, I have no questions.
Great. Dr. Scott, I just have one question. There was one number, maybe two, that really stood out to me, it was the number of books read. Could you share with the public how many books our scholars have read through this system?
So, you received a presentation on our data from school year 2223, and I think you were looking at Slide 1, and it speaks to 705,517 books completed. That means students actually opened, and they read through the entire book. And that, that was for our kindergarten through 12th grade students. And we have some additional data that translates that to, what does, what does it look like from My Own to AR? How many books read in comparison to the number of assessments taken? And so, further into the presentation, and I know that everybody does not have this data, but I'll speak to it. So, on Slide 6, we did a side-by-side comparison where we showed the number of books open, which simply means these are our students actually going in and trying to find a book that they are interested in reading. And then next to that, you see the number of books completed. And we did this by month, because as you can see, when students are enrolled, you know, the numbers are kind of low during the holiday season, or when students are out for spring break, it gets low again. But books open is the students actually going in, trying to identify what they would like to read. Books completed is what they actually read. And then comparison on the AR side, you see the number of books read as it relates to titles. And when we say titles, that means that maybe multiple students read it, or this may have been a class book, like kindergarten, the teacher read it, and then all the students took the test. So, it doesn't count the number of tests, but then quizzes taken is separate for the total number of quizzes taken by month for all students. And then you see the average quizzes per student, the percent of students who passed, and that's important to know, because passed for Renaissance is 70%. But the next column, we show you the percent of students with 85% correct. And then the last column, that's the total number of words read, which we thought was important, because we do see how our students' math performance may be beneficial of their access to the books in My Own and being able to be assessed with AR.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. I appreciate you taking the extra time, just the volume of reading that our scholars are engaged in. I just wanted to lift that up, and clearly, this, this system is helping to facilitate that level of engagement. Any other questions, Moore? Okay, thank you, Dr. Scott. Next, we'll invite Mr. Schommer up to request the approval of the grant agreement between the Mississippi Arts Commission and the Jackson Public School District. Mr. Schommer?
Good evening, President Seaback, members of the Board, Superintendent Green. The administration recommends the approval of the grant agreement between the Mississippi Arts Commission and Jackson Public Schools. In accordance with the laws of the state of Mississippi, the Mississippi Arts Commission hereby agrees to provide support in amount not to exceed $30,000 to Jackson Public Schools to repair and renovate Jim Hill High School's Performing Arts Auditorium. Funds will be applied to conducting a conditions assessment of the auditorium in preparation for future renovation, as well as immediate minor repairs, should funding allow. Jim Hill High School was constructed in 1965-66. In a recent survey of the condition of the seating in the auditorium, approximately 85 to 90% of the seats were in, had various degrees of damage. Many seats exhibit damage well above the normal wear and tear that would be expected of an auditorium seating that is 56 years old. Approximately 10- 10% of the seedings, the seats are totally unusable due to significant damage or missing hardware. The planning grant will help in preparation for future renovation. It will also allow us to consider the historic nature of the space. The grant opportunity is made possible through the Mississippi Arts Commission, and the grant supports district commitments to innovative teaching and learning and for joyful learning environments.
Thank you, Mr. Shomar. Board members, any comments, questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Shomar. Is there a motion to approve items B through E?
I shall move. Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Mrs. Thompson is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Next, we'll invite Mr. Burke, our Chief Operations Officer, to present items F through J. Mr. Burke?
Good evening, President Seaback, board members, Superintendent Green, rest of the JPS family. The administration recommends the approval of Amazon's Business Prime Fee Waiver Terms and Conditions as part of our participation in the Business Prime Pilot Program. In our continuing effort to help our teachers make the best use of their EEF, their Education Enhancement Funds, otherwise known as EEF funds, for the benefit of our scholars, all qualifying JPS educators who have obtained an EEF card now can make qualifying exempt purchases through the Amazon Tax Exemption Program as Amazon Business Prime members. The waiver that we're asking you to approve will allow our teachers to receive Business Prime Public Sector Plan benefits like unlimited free two-day shipping and free same-day delivery on eligible orders, eligible orders. This also creates an opportunity for using Amazon Business for our education tools to quote pricing and availability of office supplies, IT supplies, and other educational supplies.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Board members, any questions, comments? Okay. Next item, please?
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll read it. Next, we have the request to approve the award of requests for proposal for enterprise resource planning for finance and human resources. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, sir. The administration recommends that the board approve the award of the RFP for the Enterprise Resource Planning ERP system to Tyler Technologies. As the district explores more efficient business methods, Tyler Enterprise ERP solution is designed to help districts handle financial and personnel operations with accuracy, transparency, and efficiency. This integrated ERP system manages all core functions, including financials, procurement, HR, payroll, and revenue tracking. The Tyler ERP provides systems built with the latest technology, user-friendly HTML5 web-based applications, mobile apps, to increase work productivity, and a geographic information system, otherwise known as a GIS integrate, system integration to simplify property and asset management. Additionally, Tyler has a full application, a full-time application security team dedicated to continuously reviewing and enhancing the security posture of its products. Just in response to some additional questions and some additional information about its functionality and use, and the reasons why we're proposing this, the selection and recommendation of this new ERP supports our improvements in clearing past cap findings related to poor record-keeping and inefficiencies in business and operations management, and eliminating those things in the future. The recommended solution is robust enough, again, integrating finance, payroll, human resources, purchasing fixed assets, revenue streams, and, and other items. It has built-in functionality that will allow us to break down departmental data silos, streamline our processes, and eliminate duplicity and duplications of data entry. Employees can work more efficiently with role-based dashboards, automated workflow, and it integrates seamlessly with our current Microsoft productivity tools. It's modular in its implementation, and can be right-sized for our organizational needs. It is a true multi-fund accounting system that provides rigorous financial and fiscal concerns and controls related to management of our grants, tracking of project costs, measurement of project performance against goals, and has a built-in ability to forecast budget needs. It streamlines our HR processes from onboarding and recruiting to application processing, and to position control and performance review controls. It automates our ability to do competitive bidding, provide requisitions, manage our contracts, centralizes our inventory and assets, and provides a framework for competitive spending analysis that our current system does not have the capability of doing. It has built-in workflow productivity tools, and it is designed to optimize and create more efficiencies for us. So, hopefully, we will be better able to respond to a changing fiscal environment and answer our constituents' internal and external questions more efficiently.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Board members, any additional questions?
Yeah.
I actually have one.
Yes, sir.
You referenced the corrective act and plan. Which is this effort in service towards clearing one of the standards we have, we still have outstanding?
I do, no, I think we've already cleared the standard. This will just help us prepare and make sure that it never happens again.
We don't go back.
Gotcha.
Yes, ma'am. Exactly. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Real quick, I've got just a quick question, I think. From my, from my understanding, this is, this is entirely new, yes, and we'll roll out things that we're currently using?
Yes.
Are you comfortable with the implementation, onboarding, all that sort of stuff? Because anytime I've seen products get brought into my firm, which is a great point of reference for me, it's only as good as the adoption.
Yes.
And the training that comes with it. What, what's happening with, what, what, what are they doing? What are they, what services are they providing on that end?
So, they, they will be, so, once you approve this, we will sit down with the implementation team, they will assign a project manager. We will go through that thought process, thinking of how best to start the implementation. That means we'll bring, we'll have to bring in key stakeholders who will touch this system. It is, this is not gonna be a turn, it's not a turnkey. It's not a plug-and-play you pull it off the shelf and plug it in. This is a real culture change for JPS. From superintendent, board, I mean, we'll have to engage with every stakeholder to figure out how this will work. We will, we will be rethinking our processes. We will be reviewing our processes. We will be writing processes down and documenting them. So, this is, this will be a real undertaking. But, more directly to your point, right now, they're waiting for us to approve the contract. A project manager is being assigned. Once that is put together, a team of us will get together and work with them to schedule out the implementation. GL is the basis of everything we do in terms of finances. That'll be scheduled first, and then we will build from there.
Okay.
Timeline.
Dual pathways.
There will be dual pathways. We will have to run our existing system until we are comfortable that we can switch over.
Okay. That was one of my questions, is, is how long, where we're gonna have a redundancy? And, and one of the other questions is, and I think you touched on this, due to the modularity, you'll phase in, I would imagine you're gonna phase in pieces of, of the product?
Yes.
Okay.
Financials will be phased in, is, is, has to be phased, because it, it's the foundation. Then we will look at the components that go along with that that makes sense, purchasing, contract management. Then while we're thinking about how we deal with payroll. Payroll is a, is a, that's when we cannot get wrong. So, again, this is a, there's gonna be a layered, very thoughtful approach. This is not-
From your lips to God's.
Yes, sir. I have been through this, I have been through this, and-
That's what I was gonna lift up, that Dr. Mr. Burke has, has led a switch over of systems.
And Dr. Green, I've talked about this, I think, Dr. Mary, we, we, as a senior leadership team, we've talked about the commitment to this, and some lessons I've learned will be applied in conjunction with this to kinda guide it, and make sure it's, it comes off without a hitch. This is, this is a really big deal.
As well, some of the feedback that we got from team members as we were selecting this, this tool, there was a whole process for selection, that folks were engaged in, and modeling, and, and whatnot. So, I know a bit of that will help to inform how we launch as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burke. Next, we have the request to approve the 16th Section lease agreement between Street Enterprises, the Leacy, and the Jackson Public School District, the Lesso. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. The administration recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the lease agreement between Jackson Public Schools and Street Enterprises located at 560 Julian Street, Jackson, Mississippi, as identified as tax parcel 17416. This request was, will allow the Leacy to continue renting the 16th Section property at the location above, generating revenue for the school district. This lease agreement is for 10 years with an expiration date of September 1st, 2033. The property's fair market value as appraised as of September 13th of 2023 indicates, indicates an annual rental rate of $6,000. The property will be appraised every five years, with the next appraisal scheduled for September of 2028.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Any questions, comments, board members? Next, we have the request to approve a resolution that the intention of the board is to issue a limited tax note. It was duly published without protest. Also, we're authorizing the negotiated sale of a limited tax note at an approximate cost not to exceed $57 million. Mr. Burke?
Yes. The administration recommends the approval of the resolution finding and determining that the resolution declaring the intention of the Board of Trustees of the Jackson Public School District in Jackson, Mississippi, to issue a limited tax note and/or limited tax notes in one or more series in the maximum principal amount of not to exceed $57 million, adopted on October 3rd, 2023, was duly published as required by law. That no sufficient protests against the issuance of the limited tax note and/or tax notes described in said intent resolution has been filed by the qualified electors. Resolution directing the preparation, execution, and delivery of limited tax notes of said district, providing certain covenants of said district in connection with said limited tax notes, authorizing the negotiation sale and said limited tax notes and for related purposes. As required by law and as directed by the intent resolution the board approved, the intent, the intent resolution was published once a week for at least two consecutive weeks in the declaring ledger. The publications were on October 19th and 26th of 2023, not less than 15 days before the November 9th, 2023, days before November 9th, 2023, which is today. On or before 4:00 PM on November 9th, 2023, no written protest of the issuance of the limited tax notes and/or limited tax, limited tax note and/or limited tax notes as described in the intent resolution has been filed in the office of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Board members, any questions, comments? Mr. Burke, I had a couple of questions. This is, so, will there be another board action in term, when the debt go, when we go out to, is this the last board action?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And if we wanted to do a taxable note and a non-taxable note, or tax-exempt note, we have the ability to do that with this, this, this resolution allows us to do that? Do we just?
So, yeah, so this resolution is perceived as tax exempt. If we are doing a taxable piece, we would likely have to adopt another resolution, adopting that taxable series at another date. But, so this is, this is-
So, this is tax exempt? Okay, so we can't use this for development purposes? For, that's not associated with like our school buildings? If we wanted to, if we wanted to redevelop a building where we had some presence, I know we would have to have some school-based presence, but there was a commercial purpose, we couldn't use this series of funds for something like that?
No, but I'm going to say no. I'm getting ahead of schedule.
Okay. That's helpful. And then can you just describe, I know we've asked for just some general buckets around the initial thinking of what the funding will be used for?
Yes, sir. So, we're still thinking about the three initial buckets that I think Dr. Green and I expressed the last time. Since we're going to 42 million instead of the initial thought process of 34 and a half, we're thinking facility upgrades of about 25 million, athletic facility upgrades of about 14 million, and then keeping 3 million for any unforeseen emergency items. That's not to say we couldn't, those numbers won't fluctuate. Inside the facilities, again, we're talking about HVAC, continued HVAC repairs and replacements, renovation, continued renovations to our restrooms, facade, lighting, security upgrades, demolition, erasing selected buildings where appropriate for school purposes. And then for the athletic facilities, developing and restoring an additional football field, building a pool, possibly an auditorium at the Hardy Facility, soccer field, and then upgrading the Murrah High School baseball, softball fields.
Great. And, and is the initial thinking to, it'd be a 20-year term?
The initial thinking is 20-year term, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Board members, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Burke.
You're welcome.
We have one more. It's the request to approve the agreement between Debt Book and the Jackson Public School District.
Yes, sir. The administration recommends that the board approve the master service agreement between Jackson Public Schools and Debt Book for implementing the governmental accounting standards of boards, otherwise known as GASB 87 and 96. The governmental accounting standards of board has issued two new standards, one for leases, which is GASB 87, and subscription-based information technology agreements, otherwise known as Sabitas, in GASB 96. GASB objectives are to better meet the informational needs of financial statement users by improving how governments report their arrangements, enhancing the comparability of financial statements, and enhancing the relevance, reliability, consistency of information about leasing and Sabita's activity. Initially required for the year ending 2022, the implementation was delayed due to COVID and until June 30th of 2023. These new accounting standards represent the most far-reaching changes in GASB that GASB has introduced in many years. And implementation efforts are severely hampered by a lack of internal technical, technical capacity, the number of leases that we potentially have, and Sabitas that exist, and the fast approaching deadline. Due to timing and the impact on financial statement presentation for March, to meet the March 31st, 2024 deadline, outside assistance is necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Board members, any questions, comments? Okay. Hearing no additional questions. Is there a motion to approve items F through J?
Motion. Burke?
Mr. McGuffey has moved. Mr. Figus is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Mr. Burke, thank you. We'll ask you to stay here, although I don't know that there'll be any questions. Next, we have the consent agenda item for finance. All the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously. We had to add, opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve?
So, move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Mrs. Thompson is second. At all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda item general. All the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve?
So, move.
Second.
Mr. Figus has moved. Mr. McGuffey is second. At all in favor? Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda item personnel. All the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve?
So, move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Mr. McGuffey is second. At all in favor? Aye.
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 The motion carries. I believe next is executive session. Is that correct? There's, the way, okay. So, board members, we do have several items to consider for executive session, so we'll take a motion to close the meeting to consider executive session.
So, move.
Second.
Mr. Figus has moved. Mr. McGuffey is second. At all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and have a good night.